Um, we had other things to talk about that I'm going to read to you as you go through a little more clearly. To all present residents, while I take away what nothing's allowed in the town meeting, I do wish I could. Unfortunately, three of my colleagues who exist nearby have told me a way to be kidding. I won't wait any time to spend in this one presence that I'll leave this place to hold decisions in my leader's. If my actions are not showing my committed abilities, then I would hope my words will not sway you. Instead, I only wait to make a note of meetings which do not already now. My vision for the future of Novus and my vision for the structure of its governance. While the vision, the following is my vision. It is more important that we share our visions and work together to lead this. So if we decide to move in a different direction, I will stick with what I think. I believe the council is a natural choice for leadership chosen to represent all states of people. However, there will be a changing situation that can set the stage of a way, a device, decisive action that only a single leader can provide. With that in mind, I believe the council will decide to be elected and that they should discuss amongst themselves who should be the single voice, if needed. All efforts to be made to make decisions at the first step possible. And the agreed upon decisions and goals of Novus to be considered when making decisions. As a natural way of single voice and those decisions to be made covert through all agreed upon channels so that all people continue to have faith in the government. While these people have some of the ability to lead, I believe a few stand out. I would like to take this opportunity to state that Mr. Lira, Dave and Doc would all make fine members of leadership in Novus, in whatever state I'm in. I also believe that a separate position could be held outside of council to hold the council. If a council is the people. While duties of having this position could be discussed with many, many people, I believe thirteen would prove ourselves to be the national point of this position. After the review of the direction of Novus, I believe it is imperative that we honor our very own freedom of decision. While some of the people who are in this position, they made a good, what's up? They made a good, safe effort to deal with us and that's to be honored. I believe that Novus should continue working with its allies, providing their goals continue to align with the rest of the San Diego people. I believe Novus should treat the Empire soldiers with mercy and honor if it's a chance. Because many have not known what their actions and the knowledge of people they affect. I look forward to my swift return and regardless of decisions made today, I pledge to continue serving Novus and its people. It has been my honor to serve you as the city governor up until this point and I thank all of you for the safe use of places. Thank you for your support. And I have the letter and I'll put it right here so you'd like to read it for that person. So I think we're calling immediately to decide how to let that be.
And so with the current proposal that we're pursuing is a five-person council. Any group, for example, Landowners Company, and Church, they only have one seat. They can't monopolize it. Other than that, it's a position that is elected and we would have to come up with sort of the timeframe. We want an election for every year, every six months. We would have to figure that out as well, so it is a growing and evolving council as well. It is not a right-time position. It is a, every so often, new people can come in, old council members can step down, however, yes. The council responsibilities as I see them, this is something that can be discussed. Is sort of a point of contact for outside, Novus and outside people. But for example, when the local committee came here, they said, who should we talk to? And it was a bunch of events where the council could be a wanderer that everyone knows they can go to for that to be discussed. And then the council is committed to use that five of us to disseminate that all to everyone and let them know what's going on and if it's a big decision, put together what our town meeting for everyone to have a voice in it. So just a recap, what I call it. The council would be ambassadors or outside groups of, for order makers or city states or governments outside of Novus.
Just one voice to talk about. Is that going to be a member of the council or is that going to be somebody outside?
So the council, and you guys are very welcome, ladies and gentlemen. This is just the idea. It is not even written on a stone on a wall somewhere. You can feel free. But the idea we talked about was if there are five council seats, that amongst the five, they decide who the one person is who is the speaker. But the five seats could be very diverse. So who might be the speaker now and who might be the speaker in the future potentially change?
No, I would say that guy changed with the situation. Like, you got five council members and one of them would say of the board marshal, I expected the others. That was probably the one you should listen to with assassins murdering people outside our doors. Or something, or something, you know, and insects like that.
Um, I'm sad to be here at breakfast, but the wanderers, I don't speak to all wanderers obviously, but I know some of those wanderers do not consider ourselves necessarily citizens. We are more visitors. Um, we've been here for a while, so we are visitors. Would we be expected to hold to government and citizen in San Diego or would we be considered an outside group?
Well, I think that law is applied to everybody, whatever law it stands for. So like, I don't think you should be outside the realm of it inappropriate to people or please don't murder people. I think, I just know.
But the wanderers have their own code of honor and their own code of living. Um, but they are not necessarily the same as the Empire or even those who are in our, any of the allies of the colony. For, you know, we are wanderers and we want to, that is what we do.
Well, we are hoping that one of the representatives will be a member, a wandering member, an active member. That, to wit the name, right off my head, give you a mention, a name.
Oh, Gata?
Gata.
Well, I remember a while, but we're not, I'm sorry.
I was hoping, we were hoping that we could get a wanderer to involve himself.
You're all familiar with the nature of this, this woman. Somebody who does not hide their history. Reason why my name has come up is because I bounce between and tell whoever I ask and try to be as trustworthy and thoughtful. If somebody else is better for this position, I always would select them. But if we have people that don't have affiliations, any of the major groups, they still need to have a voice. That's why, that means one is to trust each other.
But again, like I said, I don't speak for all wanderers, but I know that, at least with, for example, myself and other wanderers, we, we are others. And we consider anything other than others that we can't, what wanderers are.
But you're good.
And so, you know, I think, I think not to overcomplicate things, I think, you know, this, it can be pretty simple. And I think if you're a wanderer or an outsider coming in, you, while here, part of this community, you have to abide by some law. I mean, respect your law, respect your traditions, but as you're here, correct? Right. But that's, that's all we're trying to say. And if this is something new, you know, from the tribe, especially like we become the tribe, we have elder, a council elders that come in and provide for the community as a whole. That's all we're trying to do. We can't, we can't be, we can't be government, right? We can't have one person, you know, we saw how that happened, right? So this is our first attempt of just getting representation for all the teams and then have people come together. And then we can come up with better, better laws and better, better things and change things. And that's all we're trying to do.
Part of the reason of having a number of votes, one is so that there's not even numbers or no matters to each other for a tribe. The other point is so that everybody finds somebody on that council that they feel that they can invite. That they can pick their needs and wants to, so that it can be brought up after.
And it's not going to be perfect. It's just something that we're going to have to figure out.
Sorry, I'm going to go ahead and flip towards what I imagine to be quite popular pages. But, uh, we had laws and it worked. I mean, uh, the trouble with Novus Colony was not with Imperial Law. It was with having Empire abused it. Okay? So before we start making councils and having the wonder how five separate people, some of which want to stay at their residence, but apparently have to ask if they need to follow our rules or other people who don't believe in money or people with bad fucking attitudes, right? Okay, and so like we said about just casting stones at anybody, we had a way that worked. Blue, funny for me to disagree with the man, but while he's trying to dissolve the government he is something part of. And I do recognize that he did not include himself in the new one, at least not by letter. And that's to be commended, okay? But, like I said, it worked. Uh, a governor, lieutenant governor perhaps, if you want to add both, if there's, if there's aptitude, right? Sheriff, which, which he's already mentioned, he is thirteen, is a lovely sheriff. God, clever. But, um, or I'm sorry, creative.
But I don't know, should I go fast? But I'll give you the fact that there are multiple people representing multiple groups. Because the purpose of the idea of multiple people, when there's one person, then you always keep growing. When there's more than one person, the likelihood is that's a point. When there's more than one person, then there's.
The more people you add, the more corruption you get, trust me.
There's a reason, yes.
Harder to do this stuff down. There's a different point of perspective here. How often did any of us vote with each other's governor and his power?
Oh, oh, Doc, Doc, sir, you don't have to tell me. I know. That's why I said we could have a governor.
Yeah. You know, there's going to be times when we will lose our, be on another council. I don't think I really mean that, but. With, yeah, with the other side. With the other side, you have more options. It's incredible because, yeah, look, we're all from different places, we do all the different things differently. We're trying to get this fucking done, so we need to think a fucking vote moving on. Nobody's going to be 100% happy. Nobody is holding by your dog at 100% respect. Nothing's here done in Oregon, right? And I don't think of that, right? Just move the fuck on.
Um, so can I just, I mean, I'm trying to tell you, President Carter, from the government, would be something as much of a backseat.
Especially.
But we're talking, what, what, that's been, that's the acting of who's starting.
There's always those. There's always those. But, but moving bodies implies that they cannot vote and it's more, I want to go back, it's like, it's hard to navigate. And that's all for those that are perfectly determined. And we talk all about adults like us.
Great for this.
Yes. We're trying very hard to be there, I promise you that, yes.
I think right now you're at crossroads, where you have to make a decision as to how you wish to be governed. I think you all know that. I think given where we are, we are in Sinara, Sinara Colony of Sealuma. We must look at precedent. My ancestors, the Ilondar Kingdom, once lived under a oppressive regime where there is authoritarian control. Close the door, yes, and knowing as well. And over time, eventually, something better came out of it. It evolved into a representative government that I believe is something much less abusive than the tyranny of the Empire. This to me seems like a natural evolution of how people should be governed.
Yes.
Of representative. It was said, the reason we need a single speaker is so that if we cannot agree on something fast enough, it still gets done. I think there should be an agenda that the majority of the council can see the agreement they override. If whole council immediately agree on something, speaker could not be able to be discapered for the entire council.
Well, yes, well, the speaker will be part of the council, but yes, we agree.
Well, he would be one vote on the council. If they come out agreeing, he said, the council already agrees. They're like, why am I never changing? Make us a pact, right? Not quite, yeah. The way that I understand it, is the speaker is a decision maker all the time. When we don't have the ability to get a council to govern today, or as that, we need to go fight. If we don't have time to sit down and say, should we do it, should we not do it, blah, blah, blah. The speaker makes the call and listens, whether it's wrong or right. Once again, if the speaker makes a bad decision, the rest of the council will sit together. So that was that decision, was that decision, so on, so forth.
Yes, yes.
Um, so speaking of laws, will you guys be implementing new laws or are you going to just to amend the ones from the Empire?
I would imagine it would be a little period of a week election if things settle as we started. We will start with the law we have, we all know from the Empire, and we will review from the other culture. The ones that make the most sense to either replace or coalesce with, so we can stay the law.
Those of us who are not familiar with Empire law, I'm not from the Empire. I am from the Scar, so I have no idea what you mean. I understand there's no, you know, don't murder people, don't steal from people, that's kind of general, but I don't know your laws.
They are, they're, I should be able to give company. We should be able to post these publicly, because everybody has to know what you did.
And that's, and that's going to be one of the top first things, is to take a look at law for Novus Colony, for our law.
I think here, this situation here, considering all things, so many different backgrounds, actually create something for ourselves all the way, all the time, every day. Whereas before, if they, we care for the citizens, and I think we have a great opportunity to do that. My intention is to get out, so that people can be on the council. My question is, if we get the two ways to take this someone and make it very helpful on the council, if it's related for us as a colony, it's gotta say, we'd like to go clean up. We have the council, but they bring the reference to go there, you can share a way for us to have that. I want to protect the citizens. And we would absolutely protect them. We are trying very hard to be fair. So if one of us goes banana, there should be a way for you to remove them. We agree completely.
All right, so, since I was interrupted, you need to get back to me. Um, so I propose this. Since we're all here to vote, well, basically what we have is the idea of a council is put forth by Blue, which will need to be tweaked and adjusted, whatever. Or my idea of going back to the way we ran it before, a governor, a lieutenant governor, Imperial Law, which the governor and lieutenant governor contains right now what controls, well, what can, excuse me, that's what they control, but this corruption, right? Is the fact that instead of just being appointed or sent to us, they are elected. We won't vote them. We could put in a term with it. We could do, you know, any number of things to curtail the possibility of tyranny, right? But our governor wasn't a tyrant, aptitude, yes, but a tyrant, no. Blue, as lieutenant governor, was certainly no tyrant, or is, sorry, certainly no tyrant, right? Although he does lead a whole bunch of people who like to sit in chair for the quarter, okay?
I don't think anyone's saying that the previous government we had in late years of Novus Colony is, is tyrant.
Let's just, let's just vote.
Well, we have to, we have four people here.
Well, that's true, but there seems to be the queue up. No one's come up with another option of government.
Please, yes, you know, of the two options.
Yep.
The only one? Do you have a question, a question to come up with? Now, my question is, how is the council going to, like, how is it going to raise anything to that?
I was trying, I was trying to explain, and then obviously, because you guys commented, I'm sorry. Um, the biggest thing is, the last communication basically was there are responsible people. I know it's not just the representation. I need to establish the imagination, if there are five people and it differs through the five, if one person is from the chair group, one person is from the church, one person is in the door, one person is a wanderer, a wild, whatever, you have a more immediate access. And if one person is nothing, which I think so is Doc out there, because Doc is, he's going to win, right?
What is that? He's more than Doc.
No, no, he's not. Well, you know what I'm saying? I think that it gives you more immediate access to have this experience, because that was the problem. And not being able to find people was a problem. So while it's not ever going to be perfect, it's our, it's our best, anybody tell me, you can take it. We're not saying that it wasn't the end. It's not on the side of it.
I, I think also it would make sure the more, of, more people have trust in the people that are leading the death. Because if only a person that was member of the church was the one person in charge and something happened to the chair group, to the party, to the heart, stuff like that, they may be like, well, the church made the decision. Or if it was just, you know what I mean? Where we, if we've got a group of people up there, almost everybody can look at them and go, okay, so I've got, I've got somebody up there that's looking out for my back up there. So I think the idea of a council, even if something comes down that is something you may not agree with, you can, you still know, my voice is terrible, council, if it's just one person, it's like, in the feeling of tyranny, it's just like, okay, well, I didn't have to say it, X person is fine. Now, at least you know that they've discussed it, our, our views are put out there and then just what the council supplies. That's what they provide. But I think it gives everybody choice in what the decision's ultimately made. It's a better, I have a vote of meaning. I don't, well, you can have a vote of meaning, it'd be fine. But I'm saying in the end, whenever the decision comes down, I know that my people who are in the church is a great one. Doc may not, you know, people, people that they don't necessarily, they're just kind of individuals, may go, okay, well, Doc's got my back, Cameron Hart, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. They all know that there's somebody up there making sure that they're, instead of one person coming out.
Maybe that's right. The council, by having multiple people from the group, is a prior point for discussion to re-trust people within the group and allowing the group to have the independence to all come together on any school going to discuss what's going on. And also to allow the information that if you, this group found out this, this group found out that, and all come together to share the information to also go back to robbery so that we now have a way for everyone to know and understand what is going on in the county and what is occurring.
And to that point, I think when you ask that question, whether thirty clear, there are probably thirty different answers of how to do that.
Thank you.
That's why we're here.
I'm wondering how the representatives of the church were aware of the council. The councilists were originally moved by a military and other religious establishment. And eventually that's done because, let's say, there's a military. Well, the little council went through many iterations and still think, I make more or less into what it is today. Two representatives of each tribe at each place of turn off, sit on a council and they determine what needs to be taken care of. This has led to prosperity and to call that is, to ease them among all the councilists. One that has finally allowed us to reopen our gates and rejoin for that. I'm not saying that this first iteration will work. The world council has seen many, many new iterations before it finally takes others into existence. Right now, we need to figure out our base. Let's figure out what we want to support, okay? Does, will it work? Maybe, maybe not. But until we get a latest creation to try out, we won't know. So let's go ahead and take this idea first. Let's try it out. If this sort of government doesn't work, if you need a bigger council, a smaller council, and that's what I would do. That's fine, but we have to start somewhere and this is literally what we need to start. We're next.
The process of building a government is not easy, it is back to process, it's getting tough. I just want to reaffirm on behalf of Sealuma, that we would be commissioned to provide foreign aid in the form of advice as part of foreign policy agreements to the council.
Listen, I'm a visiting, he has that back first, this is not a lot of skin to gain in this. But like, if you, if you want to dissolve by like, the threat of patient unselfishness, maybe you just put aside that, you don't need to, like, we're going to revisit that to like, just move, you love to whatever? Like, that's just part of what you build, you know?
I've got a question for you, so listen. How, how is your government structured? And how has this been structured?
Um, if you guys do do a council, would we be allowed to know, would the votes and stuff that you guys do be open for us to?
100%.
100%. We like to come to the views of, by all means.
It could be free, you have anything.
Again, I think we're kind of not waiting, we're bringing up a good point, but we're trying to put the cards for the horse, for the farm. We just have to figure out the framework that we want to manage. The decisions on whether the meetings are covered, who does what, and what laws we have covered. We can't do that until we figure out what government we want to support. Then we need to work out what.
So, second, let's. So then I think there are currently two options. There is a third, there's a third, yes. Well, yes, but there are two options, are the council. Current options are the council and then the governor and lieutenant governor are the two options. Um, is everyone okay with the word political?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, all of them in favor of a council? Please raise your hand. Uh, all of them in favor of a governor and lieutenant governor? Please raise your hand.
So it seems like those, the church do have ambitions to set a council is, so far, it's pretty tiny. And we've got that future in mind. So, once again, our current thought is a five-person council. It doesn't matter that, let's start with that. Um, with that, we are looking for nominations for people who are.
We could, yeah.
We're looking for, for the members of the council.
So, why does a law of council with elders, each of the roles, seats have a role? There's the killer's seat, there's the hunter's seat, there's the warrior's seat, the senior's seat. Obviously, I think, are there, that these people have roles? And what is to stop the council from being five warriors who only want to kill? Or, you know, five of anything other than this one rule that if you seek to belong to the same visual group, you would not have multiple people, one church member only, but a church member that's occulted, that's relevant.
Yeah, no.
The opposite, maybe.
Well, yeah, I think you're right. So I, I, I'm trying to really get at that, but, um, well, you guys are nominating people. So it's like some moral selection. You decide to nominate five warriors to be on the council. That's what you nominate. So, is that, is that why you're nominating?
People get the votes from the local.
Well, yes, you're letting all the council, so say for example, there are eight people nominated.
So say, for example, there are eight people nominated, you get to pick your five people for, or five get the most vocal votes. Yes, I get that.
Yes.
When it comes to the votes, if say, two people from Care Crew get in the vote to see the highest, the person with the highest, and then the other person gets stopped off?
Yes.
Okay.
We're trying to buy this first.
Just don't allow the multiple people to choose. Yeah. Okay, uh, so I, well, when I only own two over the five members, I don't, so, probably, well, maybe really not. There are two in doing that, one is each one of these, uh, candidates will make themselves available, so that anybody can help them, and get to know them. Yeah, if somebody is not here, go through that group, ask about them. Can I say something, I guess it's really simple. Alright, so we all have one, the life vision, I'm assuming you three are volunteers as well, which would, would be okay to be nominated? You talked, are you okay to be nominated?
Yes, I think a lot of people can be represented.
Alright, so there's five. Is there anybody else who, if you, is that a two?
Okay, so Harley, okay. I was just saying, I just get, especially boys, I didn't have any neck out, I mean, well, hang on, hang on, so, hang on, make it easy. Right now, like, you were saying, you were up there to, to be the unaffiliated voice. Harley is unaffiliated, would you be okay to swap that out? And now we've got five people with unaffiliated rights, and we could just move forward for the rest of our day.
I think you should have a vote between the three. I'm sure it's always very changing.
Well, okay, so now we've got a vote between you two. Real quick, do you have other comments?
Well, I, I see your board of directors, Cameron Marshall, um, ten not for me, you, we are just personally, I already, we want to, for our president and mayor, and we want to, with, with, it's our nominee for the market.
Yes, sir. So my, my, my comment is this, similar to what you said, should be, instead of all of us voting for five, to be just recognized that there are five, in which group of people should nominate or select someone for that, that.
Oh, I, I do not think that is good. And then those groups are entrenched, whereas, I think, not the mission seems that the new group shows up, and it's, still, it's, it's.
I have one people representative, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, oh, wait, I meant to be, can I get the first?
Yeah, sure.
My question is, are we right now, like, on time? And so, what are the, uh, we were not, we were not in right, we said no word, but we may write it, we were. I did have anyone who wants to nominate or consider, if they come to us, and that way we can just see everybody, we can even go against everything.
Oh, come on, other. Wait, yeah, maybe, get up there from Lou, just say five. Okay, so, I'm being the same voice again, but let's just go ahead and do the math here. So, the member of the church gonna have a member. Care Crew gonna have a member. The dwarves gonna have a member. I'm guessing the wild folk gonna have a member. If the wilders decide to come back, gonna have a member. Okay, these, these members will wind up entrenched. My thinking about this group thing, okay? Not really, not really a member of a group. I've got friends that I came here with, but we're not really a political group, right? But what, what is, what is the importance in a group? Uh, these people, for instance, what we call care groups, very effectively so, and yet they fight together and everything else, and they're just as worthy as anybody else. So what about what makes them a group, makes them a group? Harley, it's not that the council has got us, uh, into a group. It's, 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 why, like, right now, why, right, we, it's just that if we've got the votes to get somebody that we want on the council, we're kind of just getting to this point, and saying, hey, if you're in a group, you're the only one from your group, isn't it? What they, what they, what they, my dad taught me, is it's the word, you're gonna be saying, it's important. How you say it is important. And if you're saying, like, what you say perfectly fine, just making a vote, nominate who you want, whoever wins wins, then the mass will probably see what you're saying out, but that's our, that, that says who we are. Not saying, well, the church should get one, the such, such.
We're not saying that, or they, I'm not saying the church should get one. What we're trying to say is that if the church gets a seat, they can't get a second, as was brought up by somebody with.
Yes, right, yeah.
It's not that the church gets one, it's that the group can only get one. There's, there's a volunteer, so, I just don't want to move along a little quicker.
Alright, I'll shut up, I'll shut up. So, it's really, like, I had, no, you keep that shit up, no, I won't.
Alright, I have to talk about.
Oh, wait. I do, um, so when it comes to the sheriff, would that, would that position be elected by the people or by the council?
Uh, again, I think we're gonna figure that out. I mean, if I, if I.
Well, we've already decided that we're gonna do a council.
Why don't we make a decision, and then make, and council, correct, council appears to people, and decides, and, and your voices, we feel, it all, all of us feel it to be a general election, then we'll vote for a general election.
And who's the sheriff's, are we all supposed to be the sheriffs?
Sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm not too good at voting.
Okay.
Alright, great.
I do have a question.
You have a couple more?
No, yeah.
And just very clearly, so.
Talking together for one purpose, which is no vote. And what happens is, as you go here, a bunch of different voices all change, and just, they may just run out, so the council is kind of to just.
It's true, it's true, a lot of our reports get written, we got enough of them. So I think time is, what's that last question?
Exactly, one of them was, they, you guys, except a little left, right?
Well, now I don't wanna do it. I'm joking, I wouldn't, I don't, uh, I'm joking, I'm joking.
Would you like our runner?
Yes, that, you did. But you know what? You'll find them, you're here. People just get stuck here.
I think we're right on your name.
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody who ever went to the show, right, uh, offer, uh, for, Harley, get up, Harley.
Harley, get up there.
You were nominated, would you like to, that's the nominee. Absolutely, I'll be the sheriff today.
Okay, buddy.
Hey, I wonder.
We'll stand there, blue.
So I.
You, you all were a man.
I think it's fine. I'm trying to, I mean, do we, in your group, is that what we're asking?
Yes.
Okay, alright. To start, do you, do you, do you say?
So I have a thought, I think most of you all know me, I was trying to do my best to be fair, be on the land, and help everyone get together, and come together, as, as a common goal and, and a common, uh, community. Alright, all those in favor of the top, like, all my love, thank you. Let's keep it moving. I love it, I love it. This is blue, how much?
Well, I think it's very hard, Brett Tango is the first, he's all.
We, I believe we all know him, but he's down, he's just our former.
Yeah, that's me.
He's a very, I, 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 I don't, if you don't know me, I don't.
Make one of them. All those in favor of blue.
Hi. So we want to have, wait, the train's coming right here. Say, say your name, hold on.
It's more than that. Yes.
Um, thank you. Hi, I'm Steve, uh, I'm a different person, uh, I was with, uh, before, and booked with any student, I think that I would be good, if it was a decision.
Alright, all those in favor?
Do you have any comments to do with your?
Yeah.
Come on, it's great, I was figuring later, ma, I was figuring, anyway, I'm very patient with people. I will do my best to provide as much as we can be as possible, I never think that I've worked with everybody's three people, and I want to hear what you have to say. And I'm against religious bigotry, so if you're willing to be with me, if I'm using my mind, that's it. Yeah.
All those in favor, that are in the church, thank you. Well, that, that, that's all.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, can I make this adjustment to the, to the, to the, it's been very weird, you were gonna have five members that have been doing hands, and.
Yeah.
So these are the unaffiliated seats. I think anybody, one of these three people is in your group, you do not vote. And these two people, if they're gonna vote off, vote top, vote him, don't vote. Whatever was in here, I mean, you know, you live here on a seventy, the other thing is, if you're, if you're.
Your group is not representing, sorry, sorry.
It's not representing, it's, it's, you do not vote. Unaffiliated, vote, and you vote one of the other not vote. Yeah.